Organizational regular meeting of the Bloomfield Hills Schools Board of Education. Today's January 26, 2023. It's 6:33 PM. Please, trustee Southwood, can you take attendance?
Yes, all board members are present with the exception of Carolyn Noble.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Here, I think I may. Not seeing Principal Strutter here just yet. Oh, we are ready. Oh, okay. We will go to 2A then, celebrating success as University of Chicago's Outstanding Educator Award.
Colonel, I want to give a short speech on behalf to our teacher right back here, if you'd like to come up. I am honored to stand before you today to celebrate Kenneth Cameron, a teacher at Bloomfield Hills High School, who was recently selected for the University of Chicago's Outstanding Educator Award. Cameron was nominated by former BHS student and was selected from thousands of submissions. The award recognizes excellent educators who make a positive impact every day and whose guidance has helped the nominating student along the path toward intellectual growth. Each year, newly admitted University of Chicago students have the opportunity to select educators who go beyond everyday teaching and leave an impression that is carried over a lifetime. Nominees for the Outstanding Educator Award must demonstrate that they think carefully about their instruction, share an infectious love for learning, and care for their students both inside and outside of the classroom. Congratulations to Mr. Cameron. We thank you for your impact on our students at BHHS and your continued commitment to teaching excellence. And if we can just have you stand, yeah? If you guys would like to come up, you can just take a quick picture right in the middle here. Yeah, perfect. Yeah, shoulder to shoulder. What was that, not a pen? Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Okay, now we'll call up Mr. Martin Brook for the oath of office ceremony.
Hi, good evening, Bloomfield Hills Board of Education and the Bloomfield Hills Education Community. My name is Martin Brook, and I am the elected Bloomfield Township Clerk. You may ask yourself, well, what does the clerk do anyway? And I want to say that one of my first and top tasks is to administer elections in the township. These days, elections, that job looks a lot more like protecting democracy than administering elections, but it's a wonderful task and I enjoy doing it all the time. Many other administrative tasks fall to me as the clerk of Bloomfield Township. They include continuing with the operations of the township board itself and supporting administratively the township operations. One of my favorite tasks as the clerk for Bloomfield Township is to administer oaths of office, and that's what brings me here today. So could Paul, Megan, and Tarek join me down here, please? Of course, Carolyn would be with us as well, but she's unable to attend tonight. And I can tell you as well that we formally administered oaths of office back in December, and this is a ceremonial process to recognize your public service. Want to mention, too, that it's a true privilege to be here today to ceremoniously administer the oaths to the newly elected or re-elected members of the Board of Trustees to the Bloomfield Hills School District. As an alumnus of this board, I am especially honored to perform this task. I remember, though it was a little while ago, sitting right where you are today. It was a privilege. I'll never forget it. Paul, Megan, Tarek, congratulations on your election to be trustee. I recognize you, honor you, and celebrate your dedication to public service. It seems like this is the right time to also recognize the importance of public service. Students, I want to urge you to consider a career in public service. Our local community and our country rely upon talented people entering public service, such as those before me today. Teachers, police officers, doctors, judges, prosecutors, engineers, IT professionals, literally every opportunity in every profession is available in public service. Also, you should consider running for local, state, or elective office. I have done so twice and thoroughly enjoy every moment of those opportunities. Good people are always needed. And, by the way, if the best of us decline public service, America cannot continue to exist as we know it today. So, board members, I want to mention, too, this school district is, you know, and why you're here, is a jewel of our community. It was built by generations of individuals serving as teachers, administrators, and in the varied support staffs. It was built by generations of school board members who came before you, who rose to the challenges of their day. It was built by the taxpayers, who have consistently provided generous financial support. Now, this jewel is in your hands. The community, current and future, trusts and that you will respectfully work together to do what is best for students. So, that brings me, Megan, Paul, and Tarek. Please raise your right hand and together, repeat after me. I state your name. To solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Michigan and I will faithfully discharge my duties as a member of the board, as a board member for the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
All right, now that you're on the board, it looks like you're going to be appreciated. Superintendent Watson.
Kids can go home.
We'll take 15 minutes.
15 minutes?
We're going to restart.
Just start. We'll all follow your job.
My last gambling. Okay, Superintendent Watson.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to 2C.
Thank you. Bloomfield Hills Schools is proud to join 537 local and 56 intermediate school districts across Michigan to celebrate January as School Board Recognition Month. At this time, I would like to read a proclamation on behalf of Governor Whitmer in honor of School Board Recognition Month. Whereas, Michigan is home to nearly 600 locally-elected school boards that work to enrich the lives of Michigan students through education and directly influencing instruction in Michigan's public schools and whereas, local school board members are exceptional public servants who have dedicated and committed themselves to this duty by governing school districts, listening to parent voices, and advancing student achievement and well-being in schools and communities they serve. And whereas, during this month, we join with the Michigan Association of School Boards, Michigan Department of Education, local school districts, and community organizations to recognize and raise awareness of the countless efforts and contributions of local school boards and school board members throughout the state of Michigan. Today and every day, we appreciate those that answered the call to serve their community and their dedication and commitment as trustees of the Bloomfield Hills Schools Board of Education. Tarek Fila, beginning his first year on the school board. Megan Hill, beginning her first year on the school board. Paul Cullen, our veteran, beginning his ninth year on the school board. Siva Kumar, beginning his third year on the school board. Carolyn Noble, who's unable to join us this evening, beginning her first year on the school board. Dr. Michelle Southward, beginning her third year on the school board. And John Van Gemmer, beginning his third year on the school board. On behalf of Bloomfield Hills Schools, I would like to extend our appreciation for your unwavering commitment to the success of our students and school district. In the front of where you're seated, please accept a small memento as a token of our appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Watson. We will move on to public comment. First up is Paulina Natalia Mihaila.
Good evening, everyone. We are Mihaila Cobb, Paulina Hakopian, and Natalie Finerly. As longtime parent volunteers in our district, we are deeply grateful for all your hard work supporting our children. We are here tonight on the behalf of the PTO Council. PTOC wants to acknowledge each of our trustees who currently sit on the Board of Education. As a crucial bridge between our community and our school district, your efforts are instrumental in helping fulfill the hopes and dreams of our children.
We thank you for your dedication to serving our district and for volunteering your time to build an education system that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's students. We look forward to continued strength and unity in our schools with your guidance and leadership. Please accept this token gift as a sign of our sincere appreciation. We have items from Bowers Farm, Johnson Nature Center, Wing Lake, and the Prep Program. This gift represents the true spirit of Bloomfield Hills School District. Thank you for all you do, and have a wonderful night. And congratulations to new board members.
Next up is Deanna Nisha.
Hi, everyone. We're students from the Board of Education Student Advisory Council, and we just wanted to say thank you to all the Board of Ed members and to Superintendent Watson for everything you all do for us and for giving us the opportunity to be involved in our community. Thank you for everything you do for our students and our district as a whole, and we are looking forward to a great year together. Congratulations.
Thank you. And Ms. Deb Makin, come on up.
Good evening, Mr. President. Good evening, Board of Education and Mr. Superintendent. I'm Deb Makin, a longtime resident of Bloomfield Hills and a former member of the Board of Education, first elected in 1991. I could not let School Board Recognition Month go by without acknowledging the appreciation of your community for your service. This is a big lift. Your community knows it. And you are the ones selected to protect the mission and vision and goals of this district to assure the best in student achievement. Also know that your community reads the agenda, and it is a privilege to be here on the night a motion will be introduced to elect Dr. Michelle Southward as president of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education. This is an important step and a real valued one. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Deb. And thanks for everyone for coming out tonight. On to 4A, election of officers.
I guess I could, I move, get a motion. I move that for the 2023 calendar year, officers are elected by a roll call vote. The following nominations have been received and accepted by those who have been nominated. President Michelle Southward, Vice President Siva Kumar, Secretary John Van Gemmer, Treasurer Paul Cullen.
Wait a second. I will second it, I suppose. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Congratulations, Dr. Southward. Would you like to run the rest of the meeting today?
That's usually what happens.
I do, I do want to take just a second, a personal privilege. I did write something, but my computer decides it doesn't want to work. But I want to personally thank Deb Makin and Cynthia Vango Owen for all of their support and time and dedication that they've given me over this time as a new board member. I'd like to also thank my family, my sons Marcus and Justice, my daughters Taylor and Morgan, and most importantly, my husband, Tom Marcus, who is probably at home watching live. I want to thank our community who elected me for this position as well as the support I've received from these amazing individuals at the table. So, thank you, and I look forward to leading you this year. Thank you.
So, the next item on the agenda is I am so excited, I lost my place.
Board liaisons.
All right, so I was in the right place. So, Board of Education liaison and representative appointments. So, we can go through that. Can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education approve the appointment of trustees as liaisons and representatives to the identified stakeholder groups through December 31, 2023, as presented.
And is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
One, yes. One point of clarification, and I promised Rebecca, I didn't realize the order of this on the agenda. There are a couple vacancies, one for Preservation Bloomfield and one for Michigan Integrated Continuous, for the MYKIT process. I think we do need to fill those, and we need volunteers for those two positions. I promised Rebecca that I would twist your arms tonight.
There's three total, right?
There's three total. I can be on the Michigan Integrated MYKIT process. And then we have one for Preservation Bloomfield, one for the City of Troy, one for BBCC.
I can handle City of Troy.
I don't mind joining John on the Preservation.
So, John, you can mark me to the Bloomfield Birmingham Community Coalition.
Thank you, everyone. Sorry that you stood here, Michelle. I forgot. Orchestration beforehand, I ran late. So, with that being said, I second the motion.
Any others? No discussion? All right, vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There is 6, 4, and 0 against. This is exciting, Johnny. Tell me about this. All right, C, Board of Education meeting dates for 2023-24 year. Can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education adopt the meeting schedule beginning July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2024, as presented.
Any discussion? Or do we have the second?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Now discussion. No questions? All right. Vote. We'll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, 6, 4, and 0 against. Next up, Superintendent Report. Pat Watson, Superintendent Bloomfield Schools.
Thank you. I'll keep it short, just a couple things. One, we have Kindergarten Information Night coming up. It will be held February 13, 6:00 p.m. at Bloomfield Hills High School. If you know of any families that have an incoming kindergartner, remind them that that is going to be our Kindergarten Information Night. Also coming up is our incoming 9th grade Parent Orientation Night and our optional IB presentation. This is going to be held Monday, February 27. Parents and guardians of 8th grade students are welcome to join us in the Bloomfield Hills High School auditorium and learn more about BHHS and all the offerings. They'll also be meeting prior to that, also on February 27, regarding the IB program. This coming Saturday is the Fire and Ice Event at Bowers. So, feel free to come on and join us for an evening of ice carving, fire entertainment, ice skating. It'll be quite a few. I know I'm looking forward to it. Quite a few opportunities there. Tomorrow is Black Hawk Fever at Bloomfield Hills High School. It's an opportunity for the community and students, current and future, to join the Bloomfield Hills High School basketball team, starting at 5:00 p.m. Black Hawk Fever will include Pistons Flight Crew. They'll be performing at the halftime show, and also an opportunity to learn about all the different athletic opportunities that the high school has to offer. Last reminder about this one, I mentioned this one before. It's open to students as well. One of the community events I'm hosting next week is Tuesday at West Hills. Come out and play pickleball. Whether you've tried it before or not, I'm looking at trustee Cullen because I'm hoping he'll show up for a couple minutes for a rousing game of smacking a plastic ball over a net that's quite low back and forth. Again, students are welcome. Last update for today. Just want to take a couple minutes to acknowledge our friend Tina Kostick and her service to the district for nearly 12 years as Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. She served an integral role in the successful passage of the 2012 and 2020 bonds. She's led the way in all ways in the district, whether it's the budget, military renewals, sinking fund, headle rollback, bond refunding, asset funding, management of grades, all of which do what? Bring in or save the district millions and millions and millions of dollars. She's brought incredible insight to group committees at both the county and state level. She was recognized as Oakland County's Business Administrator of the Year in 2014. But we all know here at Bloomfield Hills Schools, Tina is the Business Administrator of the Year every single year. Her contributions have been invaluable, whether it's interest-based bargaining, finance subcommittee, master property planning, long-term capital planning, and there are just too many to count. Literally, we could spend the next hour and not get them all in. Tina's been at the crux of discussions affecting the educational support to our students and staff, masterfully allocating resources, keeping right thing, right reasons. And I learned that when I got here, and I would go down to Tina, I'm like, "Well, I'm thinking about this, but it will cause this." She would say, "Right thing, right reason. How's it going to help students?" And that was always at the forefront of every discussion. Tina, we are beyond grateful for your service to our district, to our families, our community, and most of all, our students. So, today, we celebrate Tina's success here at BHHS. To say we're going to miss you is an understatement. To say I'm going to miss you is an understatement. I know my wife is like, "Why do you talk about Tina so much now?" I said, "Because she can't leave, but we're happy for her." And we wish you continued success as you move on to Oakland Community College's Vice Chancellor of Administrative Services. So, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Southward, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. We definitely miss you, Tina. Always a team player, I tell you. Now, we're going to go over to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion? May I get a motion?
Certainly. I move, excuse me, move that the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes from the closed session and regular meeting of December 15, 2022. Request to approve minutes from the study session of January 12, 2023. Request to approve the monthly financial reports as presented by Tina Kostick, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. Move that the Board of Education approve the financial reports as presented. Move that the Board of Education approve the disbursement reports as presented by Tina Kostick, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of one 2023 Ford E450 cutaway box truck with service lift gate for physical plant services in the amount of $68,238 to be funded by the Capital Equipment Fund, as presented by Jake McDermott. I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of one 2023 Ford Transit Connect XLT van in the amount of $38,787 funded by the Capital Equipment Fund, as presented by Jake McDermott. I move that the Board of Education approve, approve to continue to implement the storm water discharge permit requirement to the maximum extent practicable within the Storm Water Management Plan Agreement as attached, as presented by Jake McDermott. And I move that the Board of Education approve the personnel actions as presented by Keith McDonald, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
It's been properly moved in seconds. Is there any discussion? Having no discussion, we'll move to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 6, 4, and no against. So, we'll move to the next item, Board Business. For item number A, is there a motion?
I move the Board of Education approve the not-to-exceed purchase of furniture totaling $1.3 million, $1.3 million, 19522 for Bloomfield Hills Middle School and $1,988,388 for Bloomfield Hills Middle School South, the total sum of $3,307,910, includes the procurement of furniture, delivery and installation of services due to be paid using bond funds.
The request is to, I forgot to read the requests. It's my first time on the job, as you can see. Request to approve North and South Middle School Bond Furniture. Alan Dresselhaus from Platte Morrell Cressa is here. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved in seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 6, 4, and 0 opposed. B, request to approve bid pack 6.3 district-wide moving and final cleaning services. Alan Dresselhaus, Platte Morrell Cressa. Is there a motion?
I move the Board of Education award bid pack 6.3 district-wide moving and final cleaning services to Palmer Moving Services in the amount of $203,165, to GD Top Notch Cleaning Services in the amount of $137,820, and a 10% contingency fee in the amount of $34,098 for a grand total of $375,083 to be paid from the bond fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 6, 4, and no opposing. Letter C, request to approve bid pack 8.1 high school athletic site work. Is there a motion?
I move the Board of Education approve bid pack 8.1 high school athletic work to Midwast Landscape Group in the amount of $1,578,760. Architect fees in the amount of $88,411, and a 10% contingency fee in the amount of $166,717 for a not-to-exceed total of $1,833,888 to be paid using bond funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Is there any? Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, a call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. Remember, you always say that, I remember. Letter D, request to approve agent of record for 2023 Keith McDermott, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. Is there a motion?
I move the Board of Education appoint the legal counsel for Bloomfield Hills Schools through December 31, 2023, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, a call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes six zero. Any opposed? All right, letter E, request to approve District Superintendent Goals for 2023, Pat Watson. Is there?
Madam President, I believe, you know, a note came, right? I think, from John, to maybe table this and discuss this in more detail in a group of three, right?
Yes.
Right. My understanding is that Trustee Kumar has a proposal for a committee that will meet within the next two weeks to iron out both the superintendent district goals and board goals. Is that somewhat correct?
Yes. So, my request, so can I?
Yes, you make a motion to table this.
I make a motion to table this to the committee at the whole, and I would like to suggest that the Board of, well, I guess there's six present here, identify three board members, including myself, can work with the superintendent and develop draft board goals over the next couple of weeks.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
The only question I have, I don't know, because it's going to be still, but in terms of, you know, being able to have these ready to go and delivering on, I mean, these are calendar year goals, right? Because, or is this?
Correct.
Okay, so technically, we're already, these are ongoing, right? They end in December, and that's it.
Correct.
Do you have any apprehension with potentially, if we're waiting, you know, a couple of weeks, that this, that could derail us in terms of meeting those objectives?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions? We can go around. Megan?
Nope.
John?
I guess my only question is, who would like to join Siva on the committee?
Will you volunteer?
I'm happy to.
I'm happy to throw my name in as well, unless anybody else is eager to do it. I mean, I've talked to Pat a little bit about it, exchanged some notes, so I'm happy to jump in as well.
That sounds like.
I know I've sent my input.
Right.
Yeah, he could work off of my input. I don't need to be at the meeting.
That sounds like three to me.
Sounds like three to me as well. Sounds like we've got a committee of three.
You guys are very eager about that. I don't know. No, my only, and I just wanted to make sure that we're not going to, you know, find ourselves in a spot. I think what you've laid out, as I'd mentioned with you, you know, they all, to me, as we talked, seem reasonable. They think, they seem like there are things that are going to make an impact on students. So, you know, in general, I think that they're good goals. I think it's helpful for us to talk about what does that mean, how does that coalesce into kind of what we're thinking about at the board level, too. But I just caution that we make sure that we're in our group, that we're very determined to get it done so that we don't potentially hold up, you know, making, making sure that Pat and his team can make progress.
I think the idea is to make sure that they're measurable objectives, and I think Siva has a plan of sorts, so hopefully, this is only, you know, two to, two or three hours max.
I mean, I've given, well, I mean, again, I mean, to your point, I don't want to, this is, these next couple of weeks of goal setting maps out the year. I think it's, I think it's, I think it's important. I don't think it needs to be rushed. I think, like, I've said this in the past, feedback in the past on when we look and try to do, whether it's a superintendent evaluation or even evaluate ourselves, we look at our goals, and then we kind of say, "Well, well, what are the measurables?" To determine whether we're doing a good job. There's a difference, and I've provided some feedback to some of the board members, is a difference between what, like, putting together legitimate measurables and things that are done that's going to help the measurables. Just keep that in mind when you're meeting, when we say, you know, when something, you know, that can contribute to a measurable, a real measurable, and we all know what real measurables are, and then it's, the onus is on us if six months from now, we're doing an evaluation, and we're like, "Well, you know, what can we really measure that on?" Or it's just, you know, I mean, it's basically, you know, that's an unmeasurable thing, the onus is on us to collaborate from a superintendent goal and also come up with board goals that we can hold ourselves accountable to.
And if you do a good job structuring that, then you don't need to rewrite it every time. You're continuing to refine it, but the essential framework stays the same. That'd be the thought.
So, what's the, what was the goal to have these ready and sent back to?
Our goal is to have a draft for review by the board at the committee at the whole in two weeks.
Okay. Any other discussion? So, we call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Sounds good.
Madam President, I have one other motion. I move that the Board of Education continue to use the MASB Superintendent Evaluation Tool for the next evaluation cycle and reevaluate the adoption, the adoption of the School Advance Tool at a time of our determining, perhaps during the summer months of 2023.
Second.
Motion has been properly moved and seconded. We'll have a discussion. Any discussion?
I guess, so you guys of existing board members have had training on that, I assume?
The MASB, the, some of us, some of us have, some of us haven't, but there's courses, you know, which is, which is, right, online or in person, so it's very easily accessible.
What's the, like, approximate time commitment?
The time commitment for MASB is two and a half hours, I believe, and they do it once a month online. The next one, I believe, is February 7, but I think there's one on March 7 as well, but...
Yeah, there's a hall, you should be able to go.
They should send the emails out, but if I get the email forwarded over to you guys.
Good.
With regard to the School Advance Tool, just the timing of us meeting and getting in the eight hours of their training this year was, was going to be too difficult with the new board members and, and the old board members, to be honest. So, we, we just didn't plan for, for the time allotment, so I think it would just be best if we, we reevaluate at a slow time, maybe in the summer.
Yeah. No, I think it's, we've got a lot of priorities right now, and not to say that that's not important, but I think these goals are critical right now. This is the thing that we have to get right, because it's going to kind of foretell the rest of, not just this year, but years to come. So, I'm keenly aware that that's, you know, we, there are, there are priorities to all of this, and that's a big one to me, so.
Any other discussion? All right, call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. That was the last thing, correct. All right, so, meeting adjourned.
Are you kidding me?